Magic hour has arrived, so we will call the meeting to order. We begin first with the Seminole Airport Authority. Roll call.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Gary Howe.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Susan Hammond.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Um, consideration, action, and consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Roll call.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there, uh, any petitions or appearances from the audience? If not, we then move on to approvals and acceptances. Uh, number one, bids. Consideration and possible action to approve the low bid of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ten cents from JLT Contracting LLC for the construction of a hardstand at the airport.
Can you explain to the purpose?
Okay. There you go.
I was beginning to think everyone understood what a hardstand was. That's, uh, okay. The, uh, the FAA people have noticed that we've had some heavy jet traffic at the airport, and in lieu of that, they've decided that we need a little bit heavier area for those jets to park. So, they've offered a grant to us for a big portion of that apron where the aircraft park, and so this is, this is in line with that. Sharon, do you, what's our match on that?
Less than nine thousand.
Nine thousand dollars of that amount would be in our match. Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There being no further business, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Show move.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That brings us in the Seminole Gas Authority. Roll call.
John Kramer.
Here.
Susan Hammond.
Here.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Gary Howe.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for this board? If not, there being no further business, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Show move.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. That brings us to the Seminole Utilities Authority. Roll call again.
Susan Hammond.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Gary Howe.
Here.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Consideration, action, and consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Utilities Authority? If not, we then come to current business. Uh, consideration, possible action to approve acceptance of a two percent CPI rate increase from WCA for the collection and disposal of solid waste as per the contract terms effective July one, 2016.
This is pretty much a done deal anyway, 'cause of contract.
Yes, sir, it's per the contract.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There being no further business, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Show move.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so ordered. That brings us then to the regular agenda for the Seminole City Council. Uh, roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Susan Hammond.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Gary Howe.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Oh God, whose mercies cannot be numbered except our prayer of thanks for the city of Seminole and all our people, let us love one another, for you, God, our love. Amen.
Amen.
Elections and appointments, consideration and possible action to approve the mayoral appointment of Lenora Nunzia as resident member of the Housing Authority Board for a term of one year.
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the City Council? If not, we move then to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the City Council? If not, we move then to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the City Council? If not, we move then to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us then to approvals and acceptances, bids. Number two is consideration and possible action to approve soliciting bids for the rehabilitation of the equestrian trails at Sportsman's Lake as a result of flooding that occurred in May and June of 2015. This is a FEMA project estimated at two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars, with the city's share of twenty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-four dollars to be funded from its special projects fund, Fund Ninety-Two, currently with an uncommitted balance in excess of a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
What all's involved in this?
I'll bet we've got some specialists in here.
Bet we can find out.
That may know just a little bit more than I do.
That's quite an amount.
Do we have a spokesperson for the equestrian trail?
We have, we have a lot of interesting parties, but actually, Mike Grant is our spokesman.
Oh, really? Mike, you forgot to share with me.
I'm Deanna Hamilton. I'm, uh, I serve on the Lake Development Commission, and, uh, we, we miss having our trails open at Sportsman's. It's a fantastic place. You guys that have been around a while know that a lot of us are pretty passionate about the opportunity to benefit by that. But, uh, what's happened is, over the years, uh, you know, there are paths where there's been traffic in the woods, foot traffic or horse traffic, and what, and then with all the rains that we've had, just inches and inches, it cut trenches that are opposed to working up and cutting away a lot of the topsoil that would, you know, cause erosion where we don't want it. And, uh, there would be also, there are some places that, that bobcat would use, that the ground was soaked, so they just fell over. And, one time, we were out there recently, well, before it closed, and I just pulled on a tree limb, and it fell miles carrying a chainsaw, or, you know, some of us will put it on our horse, which is not really the best thing to do, and we'd like to be able to use that.
Really hard to, to be able to get back there with a rescue crew, so, uh...
Another thing, too, was, uh, called some, I'm not sure how many locations would be cleared, uh, just because they've been closed, you know, we're just trying to ward off the phone calls from Mike's office when it's late night.
We've only been out there.
You just, you know, a shovel and a pick just don't cut it anymore. Uh, and that's what we've all done before, you know, we carry a pickaxe on our, on our horse and give access to assist and to maintain the trails. That's, that's the goal. And, you know, repair, of course, repair where the trench is ended up in a place they can't get out of.
Well, you know, that's private property coming in from the north, and they, they
have a brand and a sexist tree there.
I'm, I'm just talking about riding the north side.
Oh.
But I think, Sam, the, the north side should be more difficult to pitch from the south side.
Like it's not, we're gonna have the war shells on the north end, and more than that ride back there, if you have the south side of the streets. Uh, I know they have, uh, trade crossings back there, if you cross it the wrong side, you can't haul sports cars.
So, so there, there, we, we talked about prioritizing and doing it in some sections like that, getting some sections open, and then work on the others later. The, there, the, the thing to consider about that is that FEMA expects, when they pay for this, they expect it all to be done. That's what, that's the way they did the study in the report. I'd like to also mention, I don't know, uh, Jay has an account that he keeps, we have a couple of grants that have paid toward, to help with the city's portion of this matching part, and, uh, a thousand of it is from Oklahoma Equestrian Trail Riders. That's the group that some of you are familiar with, that does, coordinates a lot of the volunteer work and members' work out there. Just ad hoc, not necessarily big groups all the time, they just go out and three or four of them go trim something, uh, a section, and that's a thousand dollars. And then is that fifty-eight twenty-five, I believe, from Tractor Supply and American Border Works Association? Uh, that's the same group that, uh, Grant, gave us a grant, uh, a few years back. So, they, they believe in our project, fifty-eight hundred dollars, I thought was pretty substantial, and a thousand doesn't sound like much in the scope of everything. We have big plans for raising private funds to fully cover that, but as we all know, some of that's, we're gonna have to work on that.
I think they're only one of the three that are standing.
No, it ain't. It, it could go through this for a minute.
You may notice that we got a little bit of FEMA money allocated to this. Um, we had a very official, uh, he's, he's not a spring chicken, and he's in worse shape than I am physically, and she starts walking him down the streets and things that, that FEMA's gonna be paying for, that are small projects, uh, but for twenty-two thousand, for him not to have to walk the rest of the...
But once we get this, it might come in less than that two hundred.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
And all these people believe that.
Some of them came from out of town, and some from, from here, so, they, they, and at that time, they were learning to play the ball, and they said, "No, DeeDee, we'll let you go out there." God, he walked, was walking as far as home. But God, the creek is about four miles, about, not that far.
I like that one.
Me, too. I'll just pass them down.
Really?
Uh-huh. We can't circle the entire driveway because they're private property on the south end of the dam, you know, and then they have another one back and not have to ride the way. That is one thing we have over some places, is there're not, there are enough loops. It's considered, uh, challenging, you know, even, even before his mapping, that was with the debt grant, the private furniture, ties and so forth, and then...
Okay, that brings us to resolutions. And DeeDee, this is not a bypass.
Unfortunately.
We woke, uh, turns, and you either take the bypass, or you go into town to go into the courthouse. That's where the construction will... Moving now to ordinances. Item number four, consideration, possible action to approve ordinance number eleven being requested in, in Seminole, and, uh...
Private.
occasion that can happen, but it is one that has this concern. Uh, so, what we're advancing is...
If they do it underground, they don't get permission, I mean...
That's what we're saying is...
And that's, that's the problem of drilling inside the city, city limits.
Expose, you know, that system, or compromise that system.
So, you're asking...
Water with the treated waters, that water that we distribute, uh, to our citizens, but we're, we're not trying to prohibit...
Keep somebody from, I know you're supposed to get a permit, but not everybody does that.
And if you're asking if somebody can go drill a water well and just do this without us knowing about it, yeah, I mean, that could happen, but they're...
Once a year, to go and check, make sure they hadn't illegally hooked up something, if someone asked for a permit.
Yeah, we have the right to inspect it.
If they're currently hooked up to their house for some reason, and it wasn't, I mean, are they gonna be grandfathered in, or will you be going and not hook up to the city mayor?
Yeah, this is, this is...
If they have to be within so many feet, if they're within so many feet of the city main, they have to get tied up. I don't think they'll go that deep, but the deepest one we got right now, that I actually remember somebody going into, was about three sixty.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number five, consideration and possible action to approve ord...
I move to approve.
The only thing I would ask is, is this, isn't this kind of after the fact? Has this been done before?
Yes.
I think it's, it, it's gonna be a, a nice, just...
That's on the landowner. That's on the landowner for not doing it ahead of time.
Not sure they knew exactly what they were gonna use it for as well, when they started refurbishing it, when they got in there. My understanding...
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number seven, consideration and possible action to approve acceptance of an offer, and all it entails, from the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, ODOT, to buy a parcel of land in Seminole County, approximately one point oh-five acres, for sixteen hundred dollars, as per legal description in the warranty deed. Explanation, please. Yes, uh, they're gonna have to expand the bridge, widen it, and, uh, part of our land on the north side that we use for the, the little park area, it's mostly wetland, and it'll keep us from having to mow it, but they're gonna give us money for it, so that's, uh, it's an outstanding investment, as far as I'm concerned. They're gonna buy for sixteen, sixteen hundred dollars, uh, about an acre that lays between the old bowling alley and Magnolia Creek, and it's just a thin, a fairly thin strip that they need to be able to widen that bridge.
Is it far left to the west that it won't affect access to property back from Mike, or to the north?
Um...
Up where it goes up on the hill? Is it, must they clear it?
Uh, well, the highway will run east-west, and they'll still have the same access onto the roads that they had before.
No, but I'm talking about others. I know there's future plans upon, access up on the hill, is that property...
Now, that will be unaffected, as far as I know. Yeah, they're gonna still have access.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There being no further business, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Show move. Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. That brings us then to the regular agenda for the Seminole City Council. Uh, roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There being no further business, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Show move.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so ordered. That brings us then to the regular agenda for the Seminole City Council. Uh, roll call.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Gary Howe.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have a young man that is, is hearing impaired, and he missed the call for comments by the public. If you don't mind, if you, if you would receive someone back.
Surely.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. My name is Kenneth Johnson. I'm sorry, I didn't follow along, and I'm leaving again, so I have a hard time seeing people along the road. I live up on twenty-eight hundred of the Lorry Road, and I don't know which my council member is, but probably just a different person. He says it's over my house and not in the city limits. Everybody's guarded, yes. Because evidently, many, many moons ago, Seminole landed some chicken farm out there in Little Beach. They're like sales tax hunters. The red man since passed away in nineteen eighty-four, the house has been foreclosed on. I have a map, right, it tells me from the map round. He showed my outfit, and it, um, the road is not in the county's city limits. There. I heard Tommy Monks allowed the business, and it's not a county road, it's never been a county road, will never be a county road, because it's not in my place for a county road. And, and city address, and city water, and city trash, and therefore, accounting is then got within the city. But there seems to be this bridge, the road, the road's really not, they buried the road last week, uh, the county did, as a favor to the city of Seminole. I thought I talked to the city manager, secretary, and I'd like to compliment you all over your staff, you have a great staff, and every time I talk to you, you're out of their way to help. Uh, but, uh, this map is totally inaccurate, because twenty-six hundred is, another one here down here, it's right next door to me. We have five miller boxes and a six-hundred-foot stretch of that road, and nobody made any tax. Uh, one lady installed a water and iron rod at the middle of the Lorry Road here, along
That's where the construction will.
Moving now to ordinances, item number four, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number eleven.
Being requested in Seminole. And.
Drive it.
Occasion that can happen, but it is one that has this concern. So what we're advancing is.
If they do it underground, they don't get permission, I mean.
That's what we're saying is.
And that's, that's the problem of drilling inside the city, city limits.
That's.
Expose, you know, that system or compromise that system.
So you're asking.
Water with the treated waters, that water that we distribute to our citizens, but we're, we're not trying to prohibit.
Keep somebody from, I know you're supposed to get a permit, but not everybody does that.
If you're asking if somebody can go drill a water well and just do this without us knowing about it, yeah, I mean, that could happen, but there.
Once a year to go and check, make sure they hadn't illegally hooked up something if someone asked for a permit.
Yeah, we have the right to inspect.
If they're currently hooked up to their house for some reason and it wasn't, I mean, are they going to be grandfathered in? Or will you be going and knock up to the city mayor?
Yeah, this is.
And they have to be within so many feet, if they're within so many feet of the city main, they have to get out of, I don't think they'll go that deep, but the deepest one we got right now, that I actually remember somebody going into was about three sixty.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number five, consideration and possible action to approve or.
I move to approve.
The only thing I would ask is, is this, isn't this kind of after the fact? Has this been done before?
Yes.
I think it's, it, it's going to be a nice.
That's on the landowner, that's on the landowner for not doing it ahead of time.
Not sure they knew exactly what they were going to use it for as well when they started refurbishing it and when they got in there, my understanding.
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Gary How?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
In the interest of disclosure on this agreement, I'll, I'll let the council know, not really willing to budge on that, so it's a standard agreement in. In this indemnification agreement seems to cover about everything in case there were, if ODOT was sued, we would be liable for anything that would happen.
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Gary How?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number seven, consideration and possible action to approve acceptance of an offer and all it entails from the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, ODOT, to buy a parcel of land in Seminole County approximately one point oh five acres for sixteen hundred dollars as per legal description in the warranty. Explanation please.
Yes, they're going to have to expand the bridge, widen it, and part of our land on the north side that we use for the little park area, it's mostly wetland, and it'll keep us from having to mow it, but they're going to give us money for it, so that's a, it's an outstanding investment as far as I'm concerned. They're going to buy for sixteen, sixteen hundred dollars about an acre that lays between the old bowling alley and Magnolia Creek, and it's just a thin, fairly thin strip that they need to be able to widen that bridge.
Is it farther to the west that it won't affect access to property back the line or to the north? Up where it goes up on the hill? Is it, must that clear?
Well, the highway will run east-west, and they'll still have the same access onto the roads that they had before.
No, but I'm talking about others. I know there's future plans upon access upon the hill, is that property?
Now, that will be unaffected as far as I know, yeah, they're going to still have access.
Second. Roll call.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
Tim Poplin? Uh, Gary How?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number eight, consideration and possible action to approve the citizen participation. Oops, I just lost it.
Here, Bill.
Here, maybe just a minute, here we go.
Got it?
Yeah. Uh, consideration and possible action to approve the citizen participation plan for 2016, a requirement by the Department of Commerce to apply for community development block grant funding. Just one too every year, that's how they call it, don't we?
Yes, sir.
Oh, second.
Roll call.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Gary How?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number nine, consideration and possible action to approve the audit engagement letter from Dillon and Associates, P.C., for the fiscal year 2015-16 financials at a cost not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. This is a budgeted item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Gary How?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have a young man that is, is hearing impaired, and he missed the call for comments by the public, if you don't mind, if you, if you would receive someone back.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. My name is Kenneth Johnson, I'm sorry I didn't follow along, I believe it was, I had a hard time seeing people get along through this country. I live up on 2800 Glory Road, and I don't know which my councilman really is, probably just a person. See, there's my house, not in the city limits, probably my guard is. Because evidently many, many moons ago, Seminole land action and chicken farm out there, Lord, they're like sales tax, that man since passed away in 1984, the house is looking for a home, I have a map, I had it till it come, Matt Brown, showed my outfit out of, on Glory Road, is not in the county's city limits. I heard Tommy Monks allowed business, not a county road, has never been a county road, will never be a county road, because not a right place for a county road. And, and city address, and city water, and city trash, therefore, the county intends to, within the city. But there seems to be this bridge, the road, the road's really not, I buried the road last week, county did, in favor to the city of Seminole. But I talked with PD Mayor, Secretary, I'd like to compliment you all over your staff, you have a great staff, and every time I talk to people, out of their way to help them. This map is totally inaccurate, because 2600 is, another one here down here, it's right next door to me. We have five mailboxes and a six hundred feet stretch of that road, nobody made that. One lady installed a water iron right at the middle of the Glory Road here, along the back, uh, just before I parked this place, because I live on Spick Road. And they laid a line, and the mailman went off and ditched that ton of vehicle, and then the neighbor went in there and turned it back up and drove her out. So I said, the county allowed it, it's not their road, it's in the city road, I don't know what council number has, at the front, I mean, it's a church right behind me, oh.
It'd be mine.
I could probably take this up with you.
He's got a tractor too, he could probably.
I do know.
I can say this is your problem. And if it's very good, I'll say that somebody drove it, maybe not mine. And my property is, is city lots in the. Anderson Heights Station. I have lots, forty and forty-nine, I don't care. And I have one, I don't have, I have city lots. And I need to get this, not just because of the road, but I have a brother, I call central police, and have their station. What fire department, what hospitals. It's a lot of different situations to, to think, oh, my neighbors, I guess I'm. Everybody has a life complaint about it, but it's time to quit treating the sandwiches and talk about.
Yep, you're right.
So what's the report?
I'll give you the address.
Okay.
I should try to give the name, please correct, I guess.
So, so what would be like a solution for that? Uh, I mean, do you, I mean, we, we would sure to keep up the road, would we not?
Gary, for the last thirty years, we've been grading the Glory Road, we've been grading it.
The second that road was.
About, where Mr. Johnson showed you there, so.
Up to me.
There was a, there used to be a cattle yard there, there used to be a cattle yard right there, but we graded up that cattle yard, didn't turn around and come out. And since that time, they've moved in about three or four mobile homes through there, I believe, one for.
One I've been in, been there fourteen years.
Yeah, and there used to be an oilfield road that meant food there, and, and now it's, uh, kind of, they, they made private, we don't have, uh, we don't have any easements on that road. The one that he's talking about, that Glory Road we do, but for that additional road that goes through the cattle yard that he's looking.
They got a lot of evil.
Yeah, right, we don't have any easements, or, we don't have any free easement.
Mike, he says he's on city utilities, or the house trailers and so on, or you don't?
I don't know.
So, so the problem we ran into right now is that it's not actually, it's, it's, he's at the city, but it's not city, and as, as a, as entity right now, we can't, we're not supposed, we cannot go into private land.
That's why I have, it's just like, for instance, Women's Mine, those south archives, they have city water, city stores, I mean, city water and trash, but we don't maintain that.
So would the, would the solution be, as far as he could request to be annexed into the city in that little section, or?
Years ago, we adopted an ordinance that required if we accept a road, that road has to be brought up to city standards, which is quite expensive for a couple, three.
So, so where he lives is, is it not, the road is, isn't exactly in the city limits, that section, or is it? It's just a iffy?
Yeah, I'm, like I say, we always grade into the cattle, we always grade into the, to the cattle yard, so, but down the survey, I, I would.
If, if I could.
Sure.
We, we have people that live in the city of Seminole but don't live on city maintained roads, so the, the question in my mind isn't necessarily whether or not he lives in the city, it's whether or not the road met, meets the specifications that you all have set for us to, to start maintaining it. So that's, I think that's the real question is, are they going to bring it up to specifications before we take the, take the road as part of ours?
See, we ran into this over there on the housing edition that time too, didn't we? That they all, or they thought it was dedicated to the city, but it wasn't.
That's right. Bill Watland, that, we've got him in Hidden Lakes, I mean, there are, there are roads that are not.
I live on one.
Not part of our, our ability to get on, they're private roads, they, we, we had a lot of county commissioners go to jail for getting on private roads, and that's why Mike Grant's not willing to do that. Cause I already told him I know nothing.
So. You know, there's no, I don't, there's no way we're, unless it's, that we can do anything, yes, sir?
Well, yes.
Until the road's brought up, okay.
There is a way, but it has to be, you ha, they have to dedicate a street to you, and you have to accept.
But it has to be up to the standards.
Right.
We have adopted.
That's the key.
So what's surprising though is the fact you said there's no 911 members.
That would be a county issue, and I would want that corrected, yes.
So that probably needs to start the campaign.
Well, I, that's, that's a good place to start. Now, I don't know if, if Shane, what, what is the address that you go?
2800 Glory Road.
I mean, if we get dispatched to that.
Twenty-six fifty, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, they're all in that six hundred foot strip.
I'm fairly certain.
They all have their own.
Yeah, I don't know how we would have assigned them addresses, Sharon, any ideas? Yeah, if you'll, if you'll give me some time, I'll get to the bottom of it and see how they've gotten addresses and.
I appreciate that if you'd look into.
Please.
Thank you very much. Okay, no, no, that's fine, I mean, I mean, as, as, as a citizen, I mean, you have a right, and, I mean, seriously, I mean, if there's a problem, we would like to see what we can do. Sometimes we can fix a problem and sometimes we can't. Yeah, so he, uh, the city managers are going to look into it and try to research a little bit, so, to find out more of the details and stuff, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us into the time of reports, the mayor being with his daughter tonight on a special occasion, will not be making any reports, so the city manager is first on the agenda.
All right, uh, I'm going, the, the floodplain study that you see, it's actually labeled a master drainage plan, uh, we will have a presentation to you and the public, but I wanted to give you a few weeks to digest what you were going to be seeing on that night, it wouldn't have been really fair for the council to throw a few slides up there and say, approve this, uh, so this will give you some time, we'll have a full-blown presentation by the MESHAC group, uh, to, and let you ask questions about some of the potential solutions that they've got. I'm very, very satisfied with the product that we got, I'm, I'm really happy about it. It's got solutions in there, none of which I can afford, or the city can afford yet, but at, at least we know what it will cost, or a rough idea, and where we, where we really need to put our money, uh, they've gone so far as to help us prioritize where our, our biggest bang would be. Ready for some exciting reading? Grab that.
Will it be a test?
I hope not, I hope not. I, I need to probably bring you up to speed on something that we're wrestling with right now, we've got a, a few roads in town that I call a five-lane highway, so if we're on Harvey Road, or if we're out on North Highway ninety-nine, uh, north of Brahms, uh, I consider those five-lane highways, and we've had a particular complaint that when school buses stop on those highways, the traffic on the opposite direction continues to flow, and we've been asked numerous times by the individual that we would begin to write tickets. Well, our understanding, and it continues to be the understanding today, is that that is considered by Department of Public Safety, DPS, who writes the driver's ad books, that, uh, that that is considered two separate roadways, and that they will not be enforcing and will not instruct the Highway Patrol to enforce it. So I want to bring that to your attention because I know you may be getting questions from individuals, and I want to make sure that you all understand that they continue to tell us, their, their, what do they call it, the chief legal staff, or the, the chief legal counsel, uh, has called, and, and I've got voicemail from Shane, or it's on his voicemail, that he's responding that, no, that is not going to be enforced. So, uh, if we want to be more stringent as a, as a charter city, we can, I'm sure we can make it, apply to us, but the, the, the DPS and the Highway Patrol will not be helping us police that if we decide to do that. Yeah, that is a statewide application now, that's not the final say, we're still arguing back and forth with the Oklahoma Department of Education, Transportation Services, uh, they think it is a, a enforceable law, so we're, there's still things to be talked about in that remedy.
The kids don't cross the other lane, I mean, the, the bus turns around and lets them out on the other side, it's not like kids are crossing, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, now, if you're on the same, same two lanes and you're flowing with the bus, you do have to stop.
Right.
It's the opposite flow of traffic that, that according to DPS does not have to flow. Now, if that changes, we'll, we'll publish it, we'll get it in front of you and let you all know, and the traveling public know that it's, it's changed. We are continuing to plan for new construction of a building, uh, just to the north of Anna's, but actually between Anna's and Sherwin-Williams, uh, the Urban Renewal Authority is going to sponsor the construction of that building, assuming that we can get an agreement with the American Legion over trading that building for the Armory. Those plans came in this week, uh, Mike's been doing great work in trying to get those things ready to bid, and that'll be coming out very soon. Just a briefing on the budget, Jay's done some, uh, some good work in trying to keep us afloat, it is still not comfortable, we are struggling, uh, but we are not in panic mode, we've been through these cycles before, and we're going to be okay. Now, the, the departments individually have all cut back, they're, they're underway on their cutbacks, but, uh, we're going to be fine, we're, we're going to make it, right, Shane? Okay, all right. Just checking. Just want to remind everyone that, uh, even though the weather feels okay, that it is fire season, uh, we, we got, had some narrow misses last week, or just yesterday, and please be careful when you decide to burn, especially don't be flicking cigarettes, uh, it's, it's a dangerous time right now, we want to keep people and property safe. The, the staff and several of the county rural fire departments, We Woka and Conawa are beginning the discussion about the emergency services tax that is in place now, you'll recall that this is a quarter cent sales tax that has been in place for about ten years now, and, uh, it sounds like for the most part, it's going to be very similar to what was asked of the voters five years ago, so that, expect that to come out probably in August to be voted on, and, uh, we'll go from there and see if we're going to be able to continue to operate our ambulance system, you may recall that this helps support the ambulances in a significant way, uh, so we'll, we'll know more if that tax passes in August. Hey, special welcome to all our riders, thank you for showing up, you guys are amazing, I can't believe that you drive as far as you do to come support, but I know you've got, uh, really good people working with you from Seminole, so congratulations, you've got your, got your project. I don't know how many of you know Lee Randall, he's been here before, but, uh, Lee is, uh, he's doing a lot of work, I mean, a lot of work on, on buildings that nobody else has been touching, and, uh, we're really proud of the things that he's done out, if you've driven down across the street from Bank First, you've seen the sign of his motel, uh, the Grissow Extended Stay, is, is it open yet, or? It is open, so, uh, they're officially open and they look fantastic, especially in relation to what they were before. That's, oh, Tara. Stand up, yeah, stand up. Hey, you will recall a few months ago, you guys contracted with the Maine Society to do our animal shelter, she has done a fantastic job, I can't believe the progress she's made in short order, uh, there's been a few hiccups, but she has really, really put a lot of time into this, and we appreciate what you do. That's all I have.
City Attorney.
Charter review committee kicks off tomorrow for the first time in several years, so we'll be starting that up, and Bill, I noticed your signature on the, I guess the original.
The original?
Yes, the original charter. No, I'm just saying, okay, I'm just saying. Any inputs you have, we, we, we would, uh, we'd welcome it.
I would just simply observe that that makes me older than dirt.
That's all.
Okay, Ward one, Susan.
Oh, sure, oh, sure. You know, today was election day, there was a contest for this particular city council seat, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to say that to serve on this council is an honor, it's an honor, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve. I had a super, super, uh, childhood, living here in Seminole, it was wonderful. So in nineteen eighty-two, my husband and I brought back little bitty children, so that they too could have this kind of, uh, childhood, with a, a caring community, good teachers, good schools, and they thrived in the nineties, which makes me pretty old too. But, um, just to be able to serve, uh, on lots of committees here in the city and this council, so, you know, no matter how the vote tallies out tonight, I just want to say thank you to Seminole for once again blessing my life and enhancing it, and affording me the opportunity to serve, so I've just got to say, go Seminole, and let the good times roll.
All I say is, Susan, it has been a joy and pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
And be your neighbor.
Okay.
Ward two, Gary How?
Same here, Susan. Also, I thank you citizens for, uh, I mean, we have so much at Seminole, Seminole, I'm like Susan, I'm just so proud of Seminole, I mean, we've done so much, and our staff, as you said, our staff is great, you couldn't ask for better people, the guys get out there and work, our fire, police department, I mean, they're just all good people, I mean, they really care, our employees really care about this town, so thank you very much.
John Kramer?
Off that.
Ward three, Jeff Griffin?
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming out and showing your interest in, in Seminole and contributing to, uh, the lifestyle we have here and what we enjoy, it, it means a lot to everybody. Uh, also, with the fires that we had, I want to thank the firefighters and the volunteers and everyone, the, you know, the police that are out blocking the road, making sure people don't do something stupid, drive off in the smoke, and everybody that was involved, because that was, could have been a, a huge disaster if they wouldn't have been able to get control of it, and even though they're not going to hear this, I guess it was National Guard maybe that brought a couple of their Blackhawks in to drop water, which helped, so, you know, it's a, it's a joint effort, and it takes, what, four hours from a call to get them here, so you had to make that call early to, to get them here, so there's planning ahead, so thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, Tim Poplin?
Pretty much the same, just thank you everybody, all you guys came out, thank you, uh, you're welcome, every month, we don't know the problems until we hear them, so come back, thanks.
Ward four, Chris Anson?
Same thing, thanks everybody.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Well, the trail riders are here, we certainly appreciate you, we like your interest. I have one question, how many horses are tied out, outside? But I'd like to thank the staff, we have a great staff here that works for this city, they do a super job, and they solve all the problems, if they bring a problem to them, they'll get it solved, will they not, Steve?
That's right.
We appreciate it, that's all I have.
Thank you. We then come to the last item on the agenda, which is an executive session for consideration and possible action to enter into executive session under Oklahoma statute, title twenty-five, section three oh seven, point B, point four, confidential communication between a public body and its attorney concerning a pending investigation, claim, or action.
So move to go into executive session?
Second.
Move to second, we go into executive session, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Foe, so ordered, we'll take this to five-minute recess, and then we'll be in the executive session.